All right, perfect. Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council First Meeting in 2022. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Following Governor Inslee's statewide mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met, and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting either will recess or reconvene only virtually or be adjourned. Agenda packets are available in the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings will be accessed through, may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco, Richland and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, I'd like to move forward with roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
I'm here.
Councilmember Torres. Great, thank you. All present and accounted for.
And with that, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and well, we have something different going on this evening. We have, as you may know, Councilmember Ruben Alvarado has resigned from his position in the city council effective December 31st. Since the announcement of his resignation, a call for applications from qualified Pasco citizens was announced and posted from December 8th through December 30th. As a result, we have four candidates that were vetted and met the qualifications to serve on council under Council District Number Two. Tonight, the council will interview the candidates one at a time, and after the interviews are concluded, council will deliberate the attributes of the candidates, and council has the option to appoint a candidate to council position number two to serve until the next city council election, at which time the appointee is anticipated to run for the office of council member.
Ms. Barajas, sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Barajas, we skipped a step there on the last part of the welcomed script.
Selection.
Yeah, we need to select a temporary chair.
Perfect.
Sorry about that. I should have caught that sooner.
No problem, thank you. So we will step back a little bit and select a temporary meeting chair. If you have any input for a meeting chair, I would also like to offer myself as the meeting chair through the interviews and then until the appointment of the next mayor.
So, Mr. Ferguson, does this need to be a formal motion? How is the correct way to facilitate this process?
Yeah, so the correct way, anyone who wishes to be nominated or nominate themselves or someone else, it would be open at this time. I don't think the second's required, and then we just take a vote and decide who becomes the temporary meeting chair until a formal chair or mayor gets appointed.
All right, thank you. Well, as Councilmember Barajas was the mayor pro temp the last two years, I would nominate her to serve as temporary chair until we choose a mayor.
I'm in favor of that.
That's fine for me.
Perfect, thank you, everyone.
Do we need to take a formal vote, or is that good enough?
That's good now.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward with the possible appointment. All candidates will remain outside of the chambers until it is their turn to be interviewed. So the interview questions are new to each candidate. Therefore, at this time, will all council candidates please step outside of the council chambers while the council finalizes the interview questions.
Now, they're allowed back in to sit in and watch the others, right? So like number one doesn't have to wait till four's done, one can sit in the audience, correct?
So, you mean after they've completed their interview?
Once one finishes, does one have to go back out, or can one stay in here?
I don't think that there's anything to prohibit them. Really, it's up to council's request. At this point, actually, what's taking place is that the applicants are being asked to not stay in the room as council's request. Technically, they cannot be excluded, but since they're being asked to leave, they can certainly do that. But then afterwards, I don't think there's any reason why they wouldn't be allowed to stay. There's no advantage given to any candidate after staying.
I'm indifferent either way. I just want to make sure that we don't have perception, I mean, first, I want to make sure we didn't have a rule, and then secondly, I want to make sure that we didn't violate it, and then third, I guess, I'm indifferent either way. Once someone's interviewed, I think they're, they can be tortured by watching the others or whatever, from my perspective.
There's a dramatic lack of direction from the statutes in how this process normally goes, so really, council is up to its own to decide its rules and how it wants to proceed. So I guess I would just say that unless there's an objection from somebody, it sounds like that's a reasonable alternative.
Sounds good. Okay, and with that, Steph, if you can please call in Mr. Joseph Campos. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, council.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, or pro temp, Blanche.
Temporary.
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 So many titles.
Chair.
Thank you. So we will move forward with asking you some questions. We will each take turns asking you questions and just answer to the best of your knowledge and with your heart, and all these questions are really based off of the information you submitted with your resume.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I'll start it off with the first one. The demands of council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
Yes. The, I'm a salaried employee, and currently, I'm working through our Ethics Compliance Board. They seem to have no problems with the appointment if made, so everything looks like it should work out.
Perfect, and I have a follow-up to that. You basically just cleared it up a little bit. Are there any other conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than city council meetings?
No, ma'am, I have no other obligations.
And second question, as a city council member, you would be bound to the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or others in your household have any financial interest in the contract with the city?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
No, ma'am.
And do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you. And I'll defer to Councilmember Roach.
Good evening, Mr. Campos.
Hi, Zara, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duties of a city council member?
City council, you guys do a lot more than what it would seem. You guys work in the background of a lot of things. Again, you serve on committees, so you have a part, and again, outside of just your Monday afternoon, evening meetings. You also help appoint people to different councils. You help manage budget, you run the gamut of things, short and sweet.
Thank you, and as a follow-up question, what are your thoughts on balancing the interest of your district and the overall interest of the city as a council member?
That's always pretty tough, but I feel like a lot of the experience I have with the Planning Commission, I think you're privy to this as well, oftentimes, you have to kind of remove yourself sometimes from a decision and look at what's in the best interests of your community, and it may not necessarily be what you personally want. So I think the balance is there as long as you kind of lead with a servant heart, so that's it.
Thank you for your response.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Milne, if you'd like to follow.
Thank you. So we ask one question each. Two, okay. A question for you would be, thank you for coming. My question for you would be, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee or a policy decision of the city council?
It's a great question. I don't think that I would have really much, kind of one of those smile and nod kind of things. There's not a lot I feel like you're supposed to comment on. Again, kind of the same meetings or what I'm looking for, the same applicability for what we have in the Planning Commission. If somebody reaches out to me, I'm not allowed to talk about Planning Commission business outside of Planning Commission, so I feel like if somebody has an issue with another planning or council member, might just kind of, you know, that's a great, great point, you know what, maybe I'll talk to that about the council member, or have you tried contacting the council member and kind of just leave it open ended at that.
Okay, thank you. And my second question would be, again, this is an interesting question, I think. What one thing would you change in Pasco city's government and why?
You know, that's a tough thing. I was actually looking at the NCS survey, all the numbers that, from the 2019 survey, all the numbers actually kind of had really low turnout, but what it alluded to was just about 50% of people had faith in City of Pasco, but you look at all the other numbers, they're happy with the way our utilities are, maybe not the billing, they're happy with our transportation service overall, there's like 77% or something like that. What it seems like maybe the root cause of that is engagement, and I feel like this council's done a really good job of trying to improve that, and I think that's probably what I would change, is continue to go in the right direction with community engagement.
Okay, I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. Campos, for your service on Planning Commission as well as in here. Your interest in serving with us. Can you tell me what special skills or attributes you believe you bring to this council?
Planning Commission being first and foremost, the special skill and ability that kind of puts me ahead of the other applicants, which all seem very highly qualified, which is probably why they're in front of you guys this afternoon. A lot of the work that I've done on Planning Commission, you see in front of you, the urban growth boundary assessment, I've made recommendations on our comprehensive plan that we just, you know, finalized. That alone kind of sets me outside. And a professional, I have some project management experience, I worked for a small company for a long time, you know, I'm familiar with budgets. Again, going back to Planning Commission, I've also helped with the CDBG grants, so I'm familiar with that regard, and then kind of the way you guys operate, you know, making motions, et cetera, so I'm very familiar.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano, and Councilwoman Torres, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, unfortunately, I don't have access to the question.
Do you have any questions that you can, would like to ask?
If, yeah, actually, if you are not selected to be the candidate for this position two, would you still consider staying on the Planning Commission?
Quite possibly. There's a lot of thought and consideration that goes in that. Over the last few weeks, I kind of put a lot more thought into this. This is kind of new and exciting and engaging. I feel like the community service I'm providing to the City of Pasco on Planning Commission is valuable, and if needed, absolutely, I would continue to do it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Torres, any follow-up questions?
That's it for mine, thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we, do you have any follow-up questions?
Any questions?
I skipped you.
Oh, you got skipped.
I got skipped.
So sorry.
I know, my heart's broken. All right, I do have a question, though, if that's all right.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, going off script, so go figure on that. So the oath of office you'll be asked to swear to if appointed is that you do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and all local ordinances, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of that office. What does that mean to you, and will you be willing to commit to every part of that oath, even if you disagree with a state or federal law?
Ooh, that's intense. Yeah, what that means to me is it's kind of black and white. You have to obey the Constitution, what the Constitution says, you know, we the people for the people. Really vague answer here, but I'll try to keep it succinct just because I know we also, you guys also have business to do after these, so. Me personally, again, it goes back into, if something doesn't agree on, you have to put yourself into that servant leadership role, and you're not in it for yourself, you're in it for the people you represent. Very short.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions, Councilmember Maloney? Thank you, and I apologize for skipping you. Thank you, Mr. Campos, and at this point, you are either welcome to step out or sit in the audience if you like, so we can call the next candidate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for participating and offering yourself for the service. And with that, Mr. Tanner Knighton, correct? Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, and thank you for putting your name out there to participate and potentially participate in our council. So what's going to happen, we will be asking you several questions, we'll all take turns asking you questions, just answer to the best of your knowledge and with your whole heart, and afterwards, you're welcome to step out or sit at the audience for the remainder of the meeting. Okay? And with that, I'll start off with two questions with several portions to that question. The demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members are often, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
I would be.
Thank you, and follow-up, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than city council meetings?
Define daytime.
So I.
Define, like what time, daytime?
I think maybe a way to look at that is, we have meetings, I think, that start as early as maybe seven o'clock in the morning. I think Mr. Serrano serves on some boards that early. There's some that cover at noon, monthly, sometimes weekly, sometimes every third month. It's, there's a variety of potential obligations, but we'd have been a set schedule.
And that would be during the week?
Yes.
Okay, that may be a conflict, just with my existing job.
And question number two. As a city council member, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or other members of your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
I do not.
Do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
I do not.
Thank you. And with that, Councilwoman Roach, if you'd like to ask the following questions?
Good evening, thank you for coming. Based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
I'd say to serve, just to try to, what's the word, just assess the needs and then work towards the goal of solving those needs, not solving them for people, but actually helping, I guess, hands in hand, guiding, just to be a leader more than anything.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on balancing the interest of your district and the overall interest of the city as a council member?
Could you rephrase the question?
So how would you balance the interests of the district that you represent with the overall interest of acting as a city council member?
The district, too, I know there's a lot of, it's right down there by the river, there's a lot of the pathways and that kind of thing. I know it doesn't encompass downtown or anything like that, but.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if I understand the question, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we can, I can go on to a follow-up question. So someone suggests that you have a financial interest in a matter to be voted on by the council, what would you do in that scenario?
Disclose that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and Councilmember Milne, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, thank you for coming down here and doing what you can here, we do appreciate it. So my question to you would be, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee?
Report that to a higher leader, to a higher authority than that, than that mentioned authority, so as to stamp that out, so it does not continue.
Then my second question to you would be, what one thing would you change in Pasco city's government and why?
Possibly more community outreach, activities, service activities as a community, I know it's just a good way to get people to know each other, and serving's a great way to get to know people and to have a common cause, and not just generally just actual projects that it's a day, it's an hour, what have you, and I think that brings the community together a lot, brings us as a family.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks for answering the questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Serrano?
Thank you, and thanks for showing up tonight, thanks for your interest. Really appreciate your willingness to engage. So what special skills or insight do you bring to being part of this council?
First and foremost, I know I'm extremely inexperienced, I haven't had any experience in politics before to speak of. I'm bilingual, English, Spanish, and I just, I'm just trying to look at ways to serve the community. Just talking out in the foyer, you know, I was telling one of the candidates, other candidates, that I'm probably the most inexperienced, but I feel like even if I'm not picked, I'd still want to serve in some kind of capacity in the city and in the community, whether that be my district or somewhere else in Pasco, so.
Well, thank you. It's infectious that once you get that servant bug, you don't want to leave it, so I appreciate that interest.
Thank you for that, and Councilwoman Torres, would you like to proceed with a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Tanner, for applying. First question is, what do you feel is the value of partnering with schools, businesses, community-based organizations, other local governments?
While you're there, I would say there's not so much alienation. I think sometimes people can feel like their government doesn't, I don't want to say love, but that they don't like them, they don't want to serve them in that aspect of serve, of love, they don't want to spend time on them, so possibly, I've never been outed or insulted here, but I think some people just assume things, if their government isn't, if their city government in this case, isn't on top of things and making sure that it's very clear that they do care about them, people tend to assume that there's just this indifference and, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, and just a quick follow-up question, I noticed that, I noticed that you're on your application, you mentioned you're, you're pretty new to Pasco. Are you currently registered to vote, and have you voted in Pasco?
I'm registered, I haven't, I did not make it to vote this year, last year, rather.
Thank you, that is all.
Thank you. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you so much, and thanks for coming down. My question's going to be, well, we'll see, I don't mind repeating parts of it if you miss some of it, it's going to be a little bit long-winded. So, the oath of office that you'll be asked to swear if you're appointed is that you do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and all local ordinances, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office. What does that mean to you, and will you be willing to commit to every part of the oath, even if you disagree with a state or federal law?
I do agree with that, and I would, I would be able to follow it, what it means to me. Versus the Constitution, I know, there's a lot of talk about it being a very outdated document, but I think for its age, its age is extremely well, and any document like it that we've had in the world that has been inspired afterwards by that constitution, we've seen that those nations have had success as well as long as we do, and the degree to which we follow it will have success.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for participating tonight, do you have any follow-up questions? Thank you. And so that concludes our questions for tonight. Like I said earlier, you're welcome to stick around in the audience or step away, it's really up to you.
Okay.
And with that, we will call Mr. Jesse Campos.
Hello?
Hello, good evening, and first of all, thank you so much for putting your name out there and wanting to serve the community. I do know you personally, so I know you're highly involved in the community, and again, appreciate putting your name out here. So we will all take turns asking you questions, and we have Councilwoman Torres online who will also ask you some questions and just answer to the best of your knowledge and with your heart. Okay? So I'll start off with first question. The demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
Absolutely.
Follow-up question, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings during the week other than city council meetings?
If given the agenda, yes, I'll be able to.
Thank you, and question number two. As a city council member, you would be found, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or others in your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
No.
Do you or anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roach?
Thank you, Mr. Campos, for your application and being here. Uh, my first question is, based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
Service.
Service. Do you wanna expound on that?
Yeah, of course. It's, it's something that, uh, for me, um, me personally. Uh, I love the city of Pasco. It might sound cliche, but I do. Been here for forty years. And I've seen the, the development and the progress that, that, uh, former and present council has done. And I wanna be a part of that. And, uh, so serving our community is something that I, uh, love and passionate about. Is, uh, trying to do our best to help our community grow and then to, uh, service and serve our community more.
Thank you. So follow-up, um, wanted to know, what are your thoughts on balancing the interests of your district? And the overall interest of the city as a council member?
Always hear, listen to the voice of our, of my district, um, and bringing it to the table. Um, and, uh, try not to have a biased decision or, or, or anything. Um, just really listening to the community and seeing what's best for the community. And, uh, one thing for sure is also listen, listening to them.
Thank you. I'm gonna go on to another follow-up question. Someone suggests that you have a financial interest. In a matter to be voted on by the council. What do you do?
If I have a financial interest?
Yes.
Like, wh- how would that look like? What, if I had something to invest in?
If you owned a property, for example, if you had a business, um, in which you had financial interest. Um, what would you do?
I would, uh, notify, uh, the council and, and let them know and follow any procedures that it did. And that is there for the council member to follow. Um, again, I'm not in this for any kind of agenda or anything. It's basically served. But if, if anything does come that's property or anything, uh, I would definitely, um, really before I do anything. Is find the council of the, of the city and see how that would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mel?
Thank you. And thank you again for your coming down here and all your service you've done for our community. I've actually known you for a while. Uh, so my question to you is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns about the actions of a city employee? Or a policy dishes, decision of the city council?
So the, uh. A member that is, that does not like the decision that the ci- city did or the council has done?
Or, um. Basically, the concerns of the actions of a city employee.
Well, definitely listen to them, um, but not make any kind of commitment or make any kind of, uh, a promise, uh, to them. Uh, really, it's not just an individual, uh, decision. It's a, it's a council decision and, uh, department decision. So really just listen to them and try to be their best way to just to encourage them, to, uh, listen to them. And say, we'll, we'll address the matter when the meeting and we'll see what happens. Uh, but never commit or never promise.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And then this one I thought was kind of a unique question, um. What would, what one thing would you change in Pasco City's government and why?
City's government and why?
Yeah, what one, one thing would you change in Pasco City's government and why?
Oh, man, I, I, that's a good question. Uh, I, I don't think I would change anything right now. Um, I've, I've been involved with, uh, the inclusivity and diversity and, and Equity, uh, Commission. And, uh, looking at those kind of aspects on what needs to be changed within the government, uh, uh, in the city of Pasco. Um, really, it's, there's really not anything that I, uh, just comes offhand right now. Um, but I think that once in it a little bit more and looking at that, I think it's a decision of the council. And, and bringing addressing and say, what, what do you think we should do? Uh, but other than that, I, I really don't think there's anything that we need to change right now.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Serrana?
Thank you. And thank you for your time here tonight. Um, what special skills or insights do you believe you have to bring to this city council?
A comedian? No, I'm joking.
I mean your brother.
No, no, no. I, 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 I think, um, really, uh, fairness, um, and really having a heart to serve and compassion for our city. Again, there's no agenda or biases that, um, every decision is gonna come, what best serves, uh, as far as counting me. Or, or what I think is should, I, I really think it's the best of the community. And, um, so I think that's something that I really, um, strong in, is passion and serve. And really make sound decisions for, best for our community.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any follow-up questions? Councilwoman Torres, if you'd like to go ahead and ask your questions?
Hi, yes. Hi, Mr. Campos. Thank you for applying. Um, my question for you is, what do you believe the, to be the three most pressing issues facing the city presently and why?
Okay, the three, uh, pressing issues, I will believe is affordable housing, uh, finding affordable housing for our community. Um, the second one, uh, will be a, uh, the drug epidemic, uh, detox center. And more services to help those to recover from, um, um, this, uh, this disease. Um, and, uh, thirdly, um, really, I'm looking forward to, uh, forward. And looking into our growth in, in city of Pasco and how we can really, uh, benefit and how can we really. Serve our community, knowing that we're gonna get a lot more people coming, um, as well. I said, okay, that's it. I don't wanna go on and on, but that's still my three.
Thank you. Do you have any follow-up questions? Okay, Councilmember, um, oh, uh, sorry, Maloney.
Thank you very much. And thanks for coming down. Um, so the question I'm gonna ask you is a little bit of a long one, so just, just bear with me. Um, the oath of o- office that you'll be asked to swear if appointed is that you do solemnly swear that you will. You will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and all local ordinances. And that you will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office. What does that mean to you? And will you be willing to commit to every part of the oath, even if you disagree with the state or federal law?
Uh, to commit to it and, and value it, um. Knowing that it's an oath, so an oath is a covenant, um, so it's something that you are, you are promised to do. Uh, regardless of any kind of, uh, views or, or inputs that you may have, your own opinions. Um, I think it's something that you, again, bypass that to really serve our community and, and, uh, do what's best for, for it.
Great, thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Thank you so much for that. And, Mr. Campos, thank you so much for participating, putting your name, uh, again, to be part of the council. Um, so we have one more person to interview. Um, you are more than welcome to stick around, sit in the audience or step away.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you all?
Great. Thank you for participating. And thank you for putting your name and, um, for interest, uh, in being representative for district two. So we will be asking you a series of questions. We'll all take turns asking you questions. And we have Councilwoman Torres online. Who will also be asking you questions. And so I will start it off with two questions. Uh, number one, uh, the demands of a council member extend beyond attending regularly scheduled meetings and city-related activities. For example, council members often participate on local and regional boards. Are you available to attend the regularly scheduled city council meetings generally occurring the first four Mondays of each month?
Yes, if selected, this would be one of my main priorities and making sure I attend the meetings and am involved as much as possible.
Thank you. Um, follow-up question to that, are there any conflicts that might preclude you from attending evening or daytime meetings? During the week other than city council meetings?
Not as of right now, no.
And question number two, as a city council member, you would be bound by the conflict of interest and appearance of fairness doctrines. Do you or others in your household have any financial interest in any contract with the city?
No.
Do you have any relatives employed by the city?
No.
Do you or any, anyone you are related to currently have a land use matter pending with the city?
No.
Thank you. With that, uh, Councilwoman Roach?
Good evening, Mrs. Stata. Thank you for being here. Um, I have a few questions for you. Based on your research, what is your impression of the primary duty of a city council member?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Roach. The primary duty is a civil servant. It's someone who represents their community and their constituents. It's someone who really provides access between the community members in your district and city staff, as well as city council members. Um, there's also a lot of different regular decision-making that happens as a city council member. And the most important thing is to make sure that you're listening to your constituents and making sure that you're really that bridge for folks. So that they're able to, we're able to have a thriving community with that, um, with knowing the voices of your constituents and bringing them to council.
Thank you. And so as a follow-up, what are your thoughts on balancing the interests of your district? And the overall interest of the city as a council member?
I think what's really exciting is that over the last two years, I've actually been in my district. I have been canvassing and knocking on doors. Making sure that folks know how to use their voting power and know that they actually have access and can make decisions. And help with those in the city, with, among the city. And. I think, can you repeat your question? I just wanna make sure that I answer it completely. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Absolutely. What are your thoughts on balancing the interests of your district? And the overall interests of the city as a council member?
Yeah. So as a council member, my priority is my district, but it's important to also work collaboratively for the greater good of all of Pasco. And so really making sure I am able to be the voice for my district while also collaborating with folks from other districts. That we can all thrive and succeed together.
Thank you. And then for my final question for you. Someone suggests that you have a financial interest in a matter to be voted upon by the city council. What do you do?
I believe I just share, if there's a project or anything that's, I ask why the question, where this question is stemming from and then am very transparent. As a city council member, that is a hat that you carry through. Now, once you're a city council member, you carry that hat through all aspects of your life. Um, so whether I'm trying, I was trying to open up a coffee shop. Um, if that's something that I was trying to do, really being transparent with the council and city staff about the process and what's going on there. But as of right now, I don't believe that would actually happen. But just being transparent with, um, what you're working on, who you're talking to and who you're doing business with.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mel?
Okay, thank you. And thank you for coming down. We do appreciate it.
Yes.
Um, just so you know, we are all nervous at one time. We're just normal folks. Um, so my question to you is, how would you handle a citizen contacting you with concerns? About the actions of a city employee or a policy decision of the city council? How would you handle that?
As I've been in communication with my district, there's actually been a lot of folks who don't really understand the processes of city government. Or understand that they have access, or even know that there's an application that they can use. And so someone that's been on the ground, I would definitely wanna be a bridge. And I think the first thing is that knowledge is power. So how do I share with that constituent? Hey, here's a process. Here's what you can do. And you actually can bring that. There's city council meetings on Monday. As a young person, I also believe I have access to an entire group of people. That have maybe not ever been involved in city council and city, um, city aspects, right? And so even just starting off by sharing those things, they could share with their parents. And it just is trigger effect. So I believe the first piece is really education for our community and especially for my district. So letting them know that there is a process that they can share and they can bring that to people.
Okay. And then I do have a follow-up question. Not that this is a unique question, um. So my question to you is, what one thing would you change in Pasco City's government and why is that?
So I was looking over the twenty fifteen survey that was done, um. And one of the pieces that surprised me a lot was that there was only four percent of folks who took the survey. That said that they had actually attended a council meeting or had been engaged in anything over the last twelve months. So one thing that I would wanna see changed is really that education and that engagement piece. Because I think we're missing out on a lot of opportunities to reach our full potential if folks are not involved and if we don't get to hear their voice. And so as a city council member, something that could be done is really just making that a priority for us. Um, and I know that there are lots of different pieces and different things that we're already doing. So how do we just get that to community? So that's one of the biggest things I'd wanna see is just that engagement, um, go up.
Okay, okay. Well, I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Serrana?
Thank you. Thank you for spending your evening with us. Uh, it's nothing better you can do on a Monday night than be here. Um, what special skills or insights do you have that make, would you would offer to this council?
I am very passionate about community. I, after university, decided that I wanted to come back to Pasco. I grew up here. This is my home and this is where I want to invest. So just that personal piece of joining the DPDA board. Being on different, um, attending different meetings, doing food drives in my community, making sure that. I even have a little library in front of my commu- in front of my house, so that my neighborhood can receive free books. It's just part of who I am. And I believe that I bring that passion and that heart to this. Um, I also. Really thrive on wanting to understand folks and where folks are at. So I've worked in the fields because I wanted to know what it was like to be a farm worker. I worked there the entire summer because I know that my community, they pick in the fields, they wake up early. What does that feel like? What does that look like? I also worked in dispatch. I worked graveyard shift here for Franklin County Dispatch and I got to learn what our police go through every single night. What our dispatchers have to do to make sure that we get public safety, um, and make, make sure folks are safe at night. So I think I bring understanding, I bring passion. I know that I always wanna bring us back to our why. I'm really big on making sure I'm proximate to folks. And I believe in Pasco. I believe in who we could be and who we are. And I, I know that we can thrive and I know that we are, are working towards that. So I wanna be a part of it. And those are the things I think I bring.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Uh, any follow-up questions? Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Torres?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Stata, for applying. I just have one quick question for you. What is your vision for the city of Pasco in ten to fifteen years? And what changes will need to be made to make it a better place to live and work?
So if you're driving from Spokane on the way here, there's a big sign, and I don't know who put it up, but it says, keep your eye on Pasco. And I think that really speaks to who we are. I think people need to be keeping an eye on us. We are going towards a trajectory of lots of growth. Um, and I think one of the biggest things that we're gonna have to do to make sure that we keep our, um, city a really livable and thriving city. Is make sure that we are effective in how we grow and also balance providing opportunities for maybe bigger companies to come in. But also keeping our really local business and our, um, our passion for making sure that folks in downtown and other places. Are continuing to thrive. So making sure that we have a balance of both opportunities for development, but also maintaining the history of who we are. And, and making sure local businesses can thrive as well. Um, I also think my vision that I see is lots more gr-. As we continue to grow, we're gonna have to be effective in mobility and transportation and making sure all of that is safe. But also not losing our green spaces. And I would love to see Tri-Cities, or Pasco. I'd love to see Pasco be a place that recycles and is more green. And that's just better for the health of all of us as well. So little things like that, um, are places I see our trajectory going.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I agree, that is a great billboard sign. Thank you to the Pasco Chamber for that. Thank you again for applying and for being there tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, and Councilmember, uh, Maloney, if you'd like to follow up with your questions?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for coming down and applying. So, a little bit of a long question, um, um, so, so just bear with me. So the oath of office that you'll be, you'll be asked to swear if you're, if appointed. Is that you do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington. And all local ordinances. And that you will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office. So what does that mean to you? And will you be willing to commit to every part of the oath, even if you disagree with the state or federal law?
Yes, I do agree. And what that means to me is, first off, really committing the time to learning it. I think we can say yes to something and not understand all of it. And so really, I'll be sure to ask questions and work on understanding all of. And what you just shared. And the systems are also in place to make sure that there's organization and, um, effectiveness. So I, I believe in that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other follow-up questions? Thank you. And so, um. that concludes our interview for today. Um, Mr. Ferguson, if you would like to guide us on next steps?
Sure. You bet. So
Thank you.
Great.
I am so sorry.
Thank you. So at this point, uh, council can decide if they'd like to go into executive session under forty-two thirty-one ten H to discuss the qualifications. Uh, obviously that gives council the ability to uh, have those discussions in private and then they can come out, uh, any vote or any of that stuff. Obviously has to take place in open session, but at this time you could retire to executive session if you'd like to discuss the candidates.
Perfect. And I think we will, uh, go into execu- executive session.
For how long?
So 10 minutes, five minutes? All right. So we will be in executive session. To, uh, eight oh seven.
I'd, I'd recommend you include the city attorney in your exec session.
Yes, thank you. With city attorney and adequate, according staff that we should be attending. Thank you. Okay, we will return. All right. And so, um,
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, the, uh, on the agenda, you're on item number five, uh, council, uh, District Two interviews and possible appointment. Uh, on the agenda there, it says A, interview for council positions. Uh, the, there should be a B below that, right, uh, where the first motion is. Uh, sorry, we, we missed that, but, uh, that is, uh, the two different motions. So we need to, uh, uh, have somebody decide, uh, which of those motions they would like to put forth.
Okay. And
Ms. Brahas, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to appoint Joseph Campos to, uh, council position number two, effective from January third, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion. Yes.
Do we need a roll call vote?
We do need a roll call vote. All right.
Just one, one second here. I think, uh, the way we've got the dates, I want to be, I want to be precise and make sure we're, we're okay on this. I'll check with the city clerk because I know we were going back and forth with the county, but I believe, uh, the, uh, the effective dates would be January third, twenty twenty-one through, uh, and I think it's November second. Twenty twenty, well, it would be, uh, the November, uh, general election date. And then there's a short, uh, there's what's, what's called a, a short term that comes after that. So the person who comes elected. Uh, but I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, what, what answer, Debbie. Sorry about that. I don't need to I'm sorry.
I, I don't know the answer to that. So I would say that it would be after it was, um, after the appoint, I guess the election was confirmed. So that would be at the end of, of November.
Yeah, I, I think what we'd, we'd be better off not using an actual date and putting until, uh, the certification of the next general election of council member. That would probably be the best way to do that, to make sure that we're, we're not misstating it now.
Would you like for us to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a recer- I'll make a amended motion in just a second if that's all right.
Okay, so you're ready for the roll call vote then?
I'm going to make an amended motion, Debbie.
Oh.
All right.
That's right. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to amend my motion to state I move to apo- uh, to appoint, uh, Joseph Campos to council position number two. Um, effective from January third, twenty twenty-two through the general election certification. effective from January 3rd, 2022, through the general election certification in November of 2023.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you still need a second on that? And with that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so, roll call vote, Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Serrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Councilmember Maloney.
Yes.
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
And Councilmember Barajas.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, and with that, Councilmember Joseph Campos has been nominated.
Appointed, sorry, appointed.
Appointed, correct. Reading off the script. And with that, if I'm not mistaken, we will administer the oath.
All right, so I'm gonna give you this copy right now, and then we'll read it and administer the oath, office for council member. So I state your name.
I, Joseph Campos.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the law of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the Office of Councilmember, District Number Two, Position Number Two.
Perform the discharge, perform and discharge the duties of the Office of Councilmember, District Number Two, Position Two.
For the City of Pasco.
For the City of Pasco.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you could go ahead and sign that original right there, and then I'll get it back to you later, I need to make a copy. Thank you.
And thank you again, everyone, Ms. Estrada, Mr. Campos, and Mr. Knighton, not sure, oh, here you are. Thank you for participating and, and again, offering yourselves to continue advocating for your community and for offering your, your service to the community. We encourage you to continue helping the community, and again, just, your passion comes through, so we ask you that to continue participating in, in the commissions, in boards, in any way you can to help our community voice their concerns and just be there for them. Again, thank you so much. And with that, we actually will move forward in selecting our next mayor, correct? So are there any nominations for?
Chairwoman Barajas, yeah, the, there's several scripts going around, but it's the election of mayor script that starts, has about ten items on it. We'll just need to run through that real quick and then start taking nominations. Do you have that one? I can get you a copy here if you need it. Oh, good, okay.
Thank you. So I'll just read through this. The election of the mayor, mayor pro temp occurs every two years. Pasco operates on the council manager form of government. The duties of the mayor position include, the mayor is leader of the council and city figurehead. The mayor presides over council meetings, the mayor determines the council member assignments to boards and commissions for the two, two-year term. The mayor appoints members of the city to the city's various volunteer boards, commissions, and committees with council's approval. The mayor also issues proclamations, attends ribbon cuttings, and attends other key community events representing the city and city council. The duties of the mayor pro temp are to perform the mayor's duties when the mayor is unavailable. Lastly, only the city council must, may select the mayor and mayor pro temp positions. With that, are there any nominations for the mayor?
I nominate Councilmember Barajas for mayor.
Thank you.
I nominate Pete Serrano for mayor.
Thank you.
Do we need to second that, or?
Nope, so each time a name is mentioned, the chair just needs to repeat it for the council as a whole.
So a nomination for?
Just, just repeat the two, the nominations as they come in for each member as they come in.
One nomination for myself, Lynch Barajas, and one nomination for Councilmember Serrano.
And then at this point, just ask for, if there are any other nominations three times.
Are there any other nominations going once? Are there any nominations going twice? And a third time? And with that.
Close the nomination process.
Okay, and with that, we close the nomination process.
That's okay, no, no, it's number eleven on your script there, count, just take, for each council member that's been nominated.
Okay, Councilmember Serrano has been nominated to serve as the City of Pasco's mayor through December 31st, 2023. Council, please confirm this action by saying aye.
So this is the point where you're taking votes, so yeah, it's a little clunky, but essentially what you're doing at this point is saying, saying that Councilman Serrano has been elected as mayor. All those in favor?
Nominated.
I'm sorry, now I'm saying it wrong, I apologize. So, yeah, you just take votes for, for each nomination at this point, and then we count those votes and then move on from there.
Okay, so repeating this previous point here, Councilmember Serrano has been nominated. Are there any other votes for Councilmember Serrano?
Correct.
Aye.
Aye.
And that is Councilmember Milne?
Yes.
For Mr. Serrano. And Mr. Serrano for himself.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, Councilwoman Barajas has been nominated. Are there any votes for Councilwoman Barajas?
Aye.
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 And, uh, council, there's four votes, Councilwoman Roach, Councilmember Maloney, Councilmember Campos, and Councilwoman Barajas, four votes.
Then, Debbie, do we go to number twelve on the script there, where, yeah, we do the roll call, so now that those are, that's basically been the straw vote and we'll, or the initial vote, and then we'll go to the roll call for each council member.
Okay. All in favor for Pete, Pete Serrano, please say yes.
Actually, what we should probably do, Debbie, is we'll just go down the roll and ask for each person's vote.
Oh, yes, great, okay.
For Serrano or Barajas.
Okay, so Councilmember Milne.
Serrano.
Councilmember Roach. Barajas. Councilmember Serrano.
Serrano.
Councilmember Torres.
Serrano.
Councilmember Maloney.
Barajas.
Councilmember Barajas.
Barajas.
And Councilmember Campos.
Barajas.
So that's three votes for Mr. Serrano and four votes for Ms. Barajas. And that takes four.
That's correct, yeah, so the vote goes for Barajas as the next mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and Mr. Serrano, thank you again for your continued desire. With that, we will now move to the mayor pro temp election. And any council member may nominate another member, or they may nominate themselves as mayor pro temp position, and no second is needed. Are there any nominations?
Nominate, nominate Serrano.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Maloney. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the roll call. Do we need to do a first, second, and third?
I thought you did those, did you? We're still, yeah, so go ahead and ask for nominations at least two times, more.
Are there any third call nominations for mayor pro temp? Are there any second, third nominations for mayor pro temp? We're all very nervous tonight. No other nominations, I will close the nomination for mayor pro temp, and a roll call, please.
For mayor pro temp, Councilmember Milne.
Serrano.
Councilmember Roach.
Maloney.
Councilmember Serrano.
Serrano.
Councilmember Torres.
Serrano.
Councilmember Maloney.
Maloney.
Councilmember Barajas.
Maloney.
And Councilmember Roach. I mean Campos, sorry.
I'm happy to be a Roach.
And who did you say, Maloney? Okay, great, thank you. So that's four for Maloney and three for Serrano.
Mr. Maloney sounds a mayor pro temp.
Councilmember Maloney has been nominated to serve the City of Pasco mayor pro temp through December 31st, 2023. Council, please confirm the action, I, we just went through that, reading the script again. And with that, we will take a short recess.
Uh, the mayor can assign council seating.
I think we will, we should, we're all.
I'm used to seeing you from this side, so.
Ms. Torres, do you have any preference on where you're seated, or when in person?
Probably closest to where the restroom is.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
And do you, should we still take a recess, we're not?
It's totally up to you, as, as now the mayor, you can decide to take a five-minute recess and.
Actually, we will take a five-minute recess, just a quick break, and we'll reconvene at eight thirty. Actually, we will take a five-minute recess, um, just a quick break, and we'll reconvene at eight thirty. Okay, and we're back into, uh, our meeting, our regular meeting. And we will go through the agenda as we normally would. Um, and we're down to item number eight, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the coun, by the city council and will be enacted by roll call, discuss, by roll call vote as one motion in the form of listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. And item A, approval of meeting minutes. To approve the meeting minutes of Pasco City Council Regular Meeting held December sixth, twenty twenty-one. Item B, resolution of, um, Tri-City Suspending Chamber of Commerce American Rescue Plan Act Funding Agreement. To approve resolution number four, one, three, three, approving an agreement with the Tri-City Suspending Chamber of Commerce of Washington Nonprofit Corporation for the COVID-nineteen Vaccination Program, utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funds and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary funding agreement. And with that, we. Item C, um, to approve claims in the total amount of twelve million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five and thirty-one cents in electronic transfers and check them. Check. Yeah, and to approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal, municipal court, non-criminal, criminal, and parking accounts receivable in the total amount of one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven and sixty-five cents. Of that amount authorized one million, three hundred and twenty, seven hundred and ninety thousand, sixty-seven cents to be turned over to collections. Item.
So I would, so I would ask that we remove item C from the consent agenda. I would like to have further discussions about the amount to be turned over to a collection. We had to keep it interesting, right? Like, no, no smoothness from here.
How do we, how would you like?
Nope, that's okay, yeah, so, uh, actually, uh, that works out, uh, where the, the, you'll see the, under B, it's, uh, motion, uh, move to prove, approve the consent agenda as read. Uh, you, item C's already been taken off by, um, by Mr. Maloney, so, uh, that, that wouldn't be included in this, so that'll move to the regular, uh, agenda.
So will we discuss that later today or another day?
Yeah, no, so we'll move over to.
Number ten, I think, or no?
Yeah, let's see where we're at, uh.
Should be fourteen unfinished business.
Yeah, let's put it there.
All right, with that removal, I move to approve the consent agenda as modified.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And do we need a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Councilmember Milney.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Yes.
And Mayor March, uh, Mayor, uh, sorry, Barajas.
Yes.
Right, it was unanimous.
And with that, we move forward to item number nine. Proclamations and acknowledgements, there are none. So we move to item number ten. Visitors other than agenda items, this item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the ex, ex, expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, another, and offer, and after a deliberate, deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by, uh, limited to three min, to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy, lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And do we have anyone in our chambers wishing to make a statement tonight? Hearing there are none, we will move forward to item eleven, reports from committees and/or offices, officers. Any verbal reports from our council members?
The Hanford, um, community board has, uh, selected its quarterly, um, dates for meeting for the year twenty twenty-two, as well as selected, uh, the chairperson, uh, councilmember Chuck Torelli. That's all of that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney, uh, we did have a, I'm going back and checking, it's been such a long time since we met last. Um, I believe we had a, um, uh, Pa, uh, Pasco Public Facility District Board meeting since our last meeting. Um, uh, they're looking forward to, um, moving on, and I believe on April twenty-sixth, I think this is the date for a, um, for, for an election to the voters, so. Uh, there was a Herald article that recently came out, uh, that came out shortly afterwards that suggested, that seemed to suggest that it was, um, indefinitely delayed. It's not, it's delayed by a couple of months, um, at the discretion of the board for purposes of, in essence, the holidays were coming quick, um, and as we all saw that that was, um, a challenge, so that's going to come back up, uh, um, in, in the April timeframe and more. Uh, bureaucracy will follow in between that and much more information out to the voters in Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Hearing none, we will move forward to, um, item B, General Fund Monthly Report, October and November twenty twenty-one. And Director Segdell is not in.
Uh, I am here, uh, Ms. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, um, nothing new to report at this point, then what we've already, uh, discussed, our sales tax continue to be strong, and we're also seeing, uh, increase in some of our, um, uh, hospitality industry as well, the activities there that, um, have, uh, taken quite a beating over the, over the pandemic. Um, and our, um, expenses are also on track. Um, and we are monitoring, um, all of the inventory issues, uh, as I've mentioned in the past, uh, for our region, but at this point, they do not seem to be impacting, uh, the inflow um, of, uh, revenue for the city. Um, with that, um, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. And do we have any questions from our council? Thank you for that, Ms. Segdell, uh, Director Segdell, doesn't seem we have any questions for you. Um, and with that, we will move to our next item, item twelve, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. And we do have item A, uh, public hearing for a street vacation portion of East Pueblo Street.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, so, uh, this would be the time when, uh, we'll, uh, go through the quasi-judicial, uh, script. I'll, I'll give, since we have a couple of new folks on board and it's our first one of the year, I'll give the extended version, uh, I'll try to still make it quick, but uh, make sure that we're all clear on what that, we have two other items on as well, so it'll be good, good chance to, uh, make sure we're all, uh, on the same page of this. Uh, this will be a quasi-judicial hearing, uh, it is to render a final decision on the materials presented. It is defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally. C, whether there have been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing, uh, hearing the facts. D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing, that means communication outside of this hearing, ex parte. Uh, E, any, uh, other conflict with a, which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. Uh, if, at this point, if any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known.
And are there any, um?
Any disclosures from council?
Any disclosure from our council members?
Hearing none, uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Hearing none. Uh, this is a, uh, no new evidence may be present, only, uh, those who participated in the open record hearing in front of the hearing examiner may testify or arguments must be summary only and not offer new evidence, so with that, please proceed.
Thank you. So, uh, Director White, uh, would you like to, um, take over?
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, um, council has seen this item before, uh, it's a right-of-way vacation for, uh, Pueblo Street located between Utah and California streets. Um, council has seen this both in twenty nineteen, actually, three times now, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one, going on for here in twenty twenty-two. Um, there is a property owner that will become landlocked as a result of the vacation, so staff is recommending denial, much as we did, uh, earlier, um, regarding a vacation of Pueblo Street just west or left of the site that's highlighted on the, uh, on the screen. And although the owner is unwilling to participate in the, uh, vacation, things look a little bit more optimistic than they did the last time, as he has suggested that a possible resolution could include an exclusive access easement that would be worked out between himself and the owners, t, both to the north and to the east. Um, however, given the history and the absolutely undeterminable amount of time that we've spent with this, staff continues to recommend denial, uh, in the hopes that the, what is assumed to be a very lengthy process of negotiations will produce something fruitful for the, uh, all three of the adjacent owners.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from our council members? Any comments? Go ahead, have councilmembers Serrano.
Thank you. Mr. White, it sounded like you indicated there's hope pending, uh, again, this, to your point, the history here is thick and rich. Two-plus years for, I mean, at some point, either we ought to just say, let's grant this, or get these people to figure it out. Can they figure it out from your perspective at this point?
I, I think they can, um, our municipal code will not, uh, but the, the municipal code prevents us from landlocking, uh, an owner or a parcel, so we don't have many options, but, um, given, and by the way, uh, the owner is now being advised by a experienced builder, uh, that I think has offered some, uh, rationale that will help in the long run.
Okay, I appreciate that, then I will hope that maybe we'll hire it for a fifth and final time or something in the near future.
And do we have any other comments or questions from any of the other council members? Councilwoman Torres, do you have any, uh, comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. And we can open it to the public. So if anyone in audience would like to make any que, have any questions or comments?
At this point, Madam Mayor, uh, we need to hold a, an actual public hearing on this, so if you, uh, could, uh, close the regular meeting and open the public hearing, uh, and then ask for public comment, uh.
Okay, and with that.
Reopen it.
And with that, we, uh, close this, uh, public hearing.
Oh, sorry, no, we closed the regular meeting and we're opening.
Close our regular meeting and open a public hearing. And with that, um, does anyone have, and wish to speak to this item, please state your name and address, and remember to sign, um, sign in if you're speaking. So, um, call number two. Is, does anyone wish to speak on this? And third call, does anyone wish to speak on this? Hearing no comment from the public. With that, we close this public hearing.
Great.
All right, uh, Mayor Barajas, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to deny the vacation request for a portion of East Pueblo Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Campos. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same name. And with that, um, the motion, uh, moves forward. Okay. So we move forward to, um, our next item. Uh, public hearing for and ordinance for Port Pasco Rymon Industrial Center annexation. And Director White.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and, um, this item involves the annexation of, of, a little less than three hundred acres located between Highway three ninety-five and the BNSF, uh, main line that's north of Foster Wells Road. Uh, I'm sure council is fully aware that this industrial site is a location for the dairy gold processing facility. Uh, council heard a presentation late in twenty twenty-one from the Port Pasco about some financing mechanisms they intend to use for the infrastructure and a, a summary of the project itself. Um, staff, of course, is recommending council approval of this annexation, uh, given the obvious benefit to the community and the potential for increasing our industrial, uh, tax base.
Thank you, um, and do we have any comments from our council members? Any questions? Um, hearing none, um, I will open, um, the hearing to comments. We'll close our regular meeting. And with that, we open a public hearing to listen for comments from our, um, attendees. So does anyone wish to s- So does anyone wish to speak? State your name for record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephen McFadden. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the Port of Pasco. I'm also a resident of Pasco at 4311 Hilltop Drive. I'm just here tonight happy to provide any additional information if you need some. Director White is correct. The Dairy Gold Project will be locating at the southern half of the Ryman Industrial Center, which is included in this annexation along with two other property owners. And all of us are seeking the annexation in order to be able to utilize the opportunity to connect the city utility services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comment or any questions from Mr. McFadden? Hearing none. I'll make a third and final call for public comment regarding this topic. Hearing none. With that, we close this public hearing. And now I'll ask for a motion from our Mayor Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number 4568 relating to annexation and annexing certain real property to the city of Pasco, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Campos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All those opposed, say nay. And with that, it passes unanimously. And we move forward to Item 13, Ordinances and Resolutions Not Related to Hearings. And we have, again, another quasi-judicial ordinance for Port of Pasco-Ryman Industrial Center zoning determination. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And, and obviously, this item is directly related to the Ryman Annexation. It will provide for the zoning designation of this site. The hearing, Pasco's hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on this item in November and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to City Council. The zoning that was recommended by the hearing examiner is I-2, which is our medium density, our medium intensity industrial designation, which accommodates the plant.
Thank you. And do we have any comments or questions from our council? Councilmember Serrano?
We, we had a mention of basically northern and southern half. Is this I-2 going to be adequate for that northern portion where the Dairy Gold Plant's not located?
Yes.
Okay. Might as well come on up.
It, it certainly will be. And additionally, the second half of the Ryman Industrial Center, which was not annexed in action earlier, which is to the north, we ultimately would look to have that occur in the future as well. Same industrial zoning would be appropriate for any of the projects that we work to recruit.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just want to make sure we weren't cutting it short by making sure we didn't need heavy density or anything else to accommodate some of the traffic flow or any other tangential or adjacent facility. So, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, ju- just so we're clear, though, the same disclosures that were previously related to the quasi-judicial matter would apply in this matter. So I would just give an opportunity for council, if they feel like there's any disclosures they need to make related to the previous items, related to this item, now would be the time to do that.
Do we have any disclosures to make? Councilwoman Torres, if you can hear us, do you have any disclosures to make regarding this item?
I do not. Thank you.
And same thing for members of the public, any, anyone wishing to disqualify.
Members of the public wish to make a comment?
Disqualify any council members.
Disqualify one of our council members.
Hearing none.
Hearing none. We move forward. And Mayor Barajas, if I can get a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number 4569, assigning I-2 zoning to the Ryman Industrial Center Annexation area as recommended by the hearing examiner, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Can I get a second?
This is Councilman Milne. I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Milne. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none. We move forward, and it passes unanimously. And we move to Item B, another quasi-judicial item, ordinance with Vinpamcon Buddhist Rezone. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And this item involves considerably less property, just a little under one and a half acres, but it's at the northeast corner of 26th and Henry. The existing zoning is R-2, which is medium density, and the applicant and owners wish to rezone the property to R-4 for the purpose of constructing two fourplex multifamily units. Again, the hearing examiner conducted a hearing in November for the proposed rezone and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to City Council.
Thank you for that. And do we have any questions? Again, this is a quasi-judicial matter. Any disclosures from our council members? Or any disclosures from our attendees tonight?
I have a disclosure. I, I don't think this would affect my decision, but my mother lives adjacent to this property.
Okay.
Any, any members of the public wishing to disqualify any council members related to this matter? Hearing none. If, if Councilmember Campos is comfortable proceeding at this point, it's his decision whether he feels like he can be impartial and proceed as a member on that.
I do.
Thank you. All right. And so, go ahead, Councilmember Milne. Mayor Barajas? Maloney.
Man, we gotta, we gotta, we have to separate our seats, right? He's confusing her. So Director White, I do have a question on this. There is included in the packet a letter from one of the property owners nearby this property. And not asking about the content specifically, but I'm interested in understanding the process. How does the hearing examiner evaluate and consider, you know, a letter such as this one opposing the rezone?
Yeah, well, any public comments are forwarded to the examiner if they're not made at the meeting. So that information is provided either, depending on when it comes in, either with the packet, which is mailed to the examiner roughly a week before, or at the meeting, if it comes in after the packet's mailed out. And I, I, I'm not sure what reasoning he uses for specific information, but my guess is that unless there is a code-based reason or adverse reason why it would affect his assumed decision, that he simply won't be swayed by evidence that is either conjecture or an opinion, or otherwise not based in fact.
Great, thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from our council members? Councilwoman Roach, would, would you have any, sorry, Councilwoman Torres? Do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you, though.
Thank you. I apologize for that. We're all very nervous tonight. Obviously, getting everyone's names mixed up. And with that, we move forward. And Mayor Barajas, would you like to make a motion?
Mayor Barajas, I would. I move to adopt ordinance number 4570, rezoning a parcel located at 1105 North 26th Avenue, Pasco, Washington, from R-2 to R-4, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Torres? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And with that, it goes through unanimously. And we move forward to Item C, Resolution Setting a Public Meeting Date for Lamb 5 LLC Annexation Petition. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And this item involves setting a public meeting for the purpose of accepting the annexation that is actually taking place. The original intent was located on the northwest corner of Court Street, Road 68. The, through the use of outside utility agreements, the annexation area has been expanded to include property both on the northeast and northwest corners and further north, all of course within the Pasco urban growth area. The approval of the resolution is a first step in, annexations are very lengthy and very complicated in terms of process. But it's the first step to begin the actual process of utilizing the outside utility agreements, making contact with the owners, making sure they understand the ramifications of annexation, and then ultimately bringing council back once the petition is signed. A bona fide petition that council will need to make a formal decision on annexation. That will include a recommendation on the zoning from the hearing examiner. And the comprehensive plan has three different land use designations for the proposed annexation area, which is the last reference in your packet, the last map. And they include both a commercial designation, a low-density designation, and a medium, mixed residential designation, which allows a variety of densities. So this is going to be a little more complicated, I think, than what we've seen as of, as of late. But ultimately, you will be making a decision relatively soon on an annexation involving more than this property, but a significant chunk of that unincorporated area of Pasco.
Thank you for that. Wow. Okay, so can I get a motion on this item?
This is Mayor Barajas. I move to approve Resolution Number 4134, setting 7:00 PM, January 18th, 2022, as a time and date for a public meeting to consider the Lamb 5 LLC Notice of Intent to Commence Annexation of the Property Located at the Northwest Corner of, of West Court Street and Road 68.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor? Actually, no. So it's been seconded by Councilmember Serrano. And with that, we move forward to Item. Me too, yes. Are there any comments from our council members regarding this item to either, to staff or Director White? Councilwoman Torres, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. And so with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And with that, it passes unanimously. And we move forward to Item D, Resolution 2022-2026 Hanford Communities Interlocal Agreement. And with that, we go to City Manager Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So through interlocal agreement, cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland, along with Benton and Franklin Counties, and more recently, West Richland, have operated together, what's known as the Hanford Communities Organization. The organization provides a forum for local government. Representatives can get together and monitor and, and influence a wide variety of community issues associated with Hanford, such as emergency operations, regional economy, health, safety, et cetera. The organization does employ professional staff to assist in monitoring Hanford activities and to keep the members updated on a continuing basis. TRIDEC is currently serving in that role. Member representatives are appointed by the legislative bodies. As we heard earlier this evening, Councilmember Roach currently has that honor, although you'll be looking, talking about committee assignments a little later this month. Anyway, over the years, this committee's been successful in being able to influence issues associated with Hanford, and I think probably been far more effective as a group than they could do so individually. The agreement was last renewed in 2016 for a period of five years, which expired December 31st of 2021. The recommended action would extend the interlocal for an additional five-year term from January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2026. I've been in contact with the other member agencies. All, all, all wish to extend the agreement and will have on their agendas, if not tomorrow, some of them, at some point in time really this month. So timely to, to act on this evening. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from our council? Councilwoman Torres, do you have any questions?
I know I cannot. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, Mayor Barajas, can we get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 4135, the 2022 to 2026 Hanford Communities Interlocal Agreement.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Torres. And with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, say nay. And with that, it passes unanimously. And we move forward to Item E, Resolution Professional Services Agreement for Design of Sylvester Street Safety Improvement. And with that, we go to Director Welling.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. This item, I am happily going to turn over to our CIP manager, Maria Sara.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. What we have in this item for you is design services agreement with our selected consultant, HDR Engineering. And this project, this services agreement, is for the design and right-of-way acquisition for a project, Sylvester Street Safety Improvements Project. This project is located on Sylvester Street Corridor. It extends between Third Avenue and Road 54, excluding the overpass. As you may know, this project was included in our CIP and Transportation Improvement Plan as well. The project was originally identified as a high-safety priority in our local roadway safety plan prepared in 2020, based on number of crashes and the lack of pedestrian crossing and lack of pedestrian facilities. So the city pursued funding through state and federal agencies, and we were successful in receiving a federal grant, safety improvement program grant, and pedestrian and bicycle state grant. Now, since each grant has very specific scope that is covered, and both grants together make for the corridor to be a full improvement of, of this, two stretches of, of road on either side of the overpass, we have, as you may have seen in our professional services agreement, two scopes of work that relate directly with the scope of each grant. And I can go into detail into what each of these grants cover. So in general terms, I would say the federal grant covers most of the eastern portion of the corridor improvements, which is retrofitted to existing sidewalks and AVA ramps, signals, and restructuring of the whole corridor to allow for a reconfiguration of the lanes, allowing for a central turn lane, one lane in each direction for street traffic and bicycle lanes. Now, the state grant, which is the state grant, covers most of the improvements for pedestrians in the western side of the corridor. So that is between the overpass and Road 54. in the western side of the corridor, so that is between the overpass and Road fifty-four. In order to track the expenses adequately for each grant, which is required, we have set up the scope in a way where we can easily divide the scope into two, and then track separately and ask reimbursement more clearly with less work on, on either side, either ours to prepare the reimbursement requests, or the state and federal agencies reviewing those requests. With that, I think I covered all the highlights, but if I miss anything, I would be happy to answer any question.
Thank you for that, Ms. Sara. Do we have any questions from our council members? Council, sorry, Mayor Protam Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Barrahas, and, and thank you, Ms. Sara, for your, for your overview here. I do have two questions. One question is about the scope of the project from a standpoint of, a very minor question. Why doesn't it go like two blocks further to the railroad tracks? Is there a particular reason why we chose to end it at Third instead of, say, First?
It had to do with the width of the roadway, actually. And so it had to do with how wide the road is starting on, on Third onward, and being able to provide that, that continuity for the new improvements, including that left turn lane, or center turn lane, sorry.
Got it, so the narrow, right next to City Hall here, it's just too narrow for that, so it's no, no value in having those connected. Okay, I understand that, thank you. My other question is, a portion of this kind of, at least in, in my view, goes through our downtown or potentially what will be covered in part by the downtown master plan. Is there anything in here that will tie any conversation or any findings or any observations from the downtown master planning, if relevant, into any portion of Sylvester that will be connected to our downtown region?
Hey, I'll take that one. I think the, the idea is that the work going on in the downtown master plan is aware of this project, and so because we've got funding for it, and, and the funding is based on what was proposed for the corridor in terms of turning it into a complete streets, so that's going to get rolled into what I think is going to be, come out of the downtown master plan.
So if I understand that correctly, then it's in essence an assumption that the master planning effort in downtown is going to be based off of, this is going to be how this is, given that the funding exists in, in full for, for this project, so any, any overlap there will be kind of assumed in their planning?
Well, I guess I would characterize it not as the whole downtown master plan, but as far as Sylvester Street is concerned, yes, I think the project will dictate what goes on the street in terms of improvements, but the downtown master plan will look at everything else related to the downtown and all the other corridors within the downtown area.
All right, thank you. No more questions from me.
Councilwoman Torres, I'm sorry, I can't see if you're trying to ask a question or not, so I'd like to give you the opportunity. Do you have any questions or comments?
I just have a quick question about the bike lane. I know that they stop at Third, is there any way that it's going to connect any further for the bike lane?
I will answer based on, on the scope of this project and the scope of these grants. So these grants are very prescriptive in the limits of the project. So we know that this project specifically, bike lane related, we will have the reconfiguration of, of this corridor, and it will go from Third all the way to fifty-four, except for the overpass, which is its own separate project in the future. Now, as part of the other planning efforts are happening, the understanding is that there is a desire to have bike lanes connect, right, to enable that, that connectivity. But as far as what this project provides, it's really very limited scope, or the scope cannot be extended further as part of this one effort.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
If I may have a question for Director Worley. What, if any, beyond public notice or community engagement is planned to, I guess, anticipate some of the public comment that might come about improving Sylvester? So we saw that email from a resident, and I anticipate with any type of change, and as massive as this is, from Third to fifty-four, it's going to affect a lot of residents who live along that corridor, that they might be opinionated about it. And so does the city have plans to have an information session, answer questions, present to what planning looks like, and how that affects them, timeline, any of the scope of the project?
I would say that initially, there was a presentation to council on the local road safety plan and on the application that was prepared for the grants. And so it was an opportunity to present to the public what was being proposed in terms of improvements for Sylvester Street. I do believe that Task Nine A for the first scope of work does have a public involvement program, and so there will be opportunities for the public to weigh in on how the project is getting developed. So there will be a, a public involvement process as we go through the design.
Thank you for that. I think we should probably be as mindful as possible about engaging with the public and just being informative, because sometimes the, the negativity can run amok when, in actuality, this is a positive, an intended positive impact for that whole corridor to have a safe access to transportation, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other comments from our council members? Looks like we don't have any more comments, and with that, Mayor Protam, can we get a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barrahas. I move to approve resolution number four one three six, authorizing the execution of the professional services agreement by the city manager with H D R Engineering Incorporated for the design of the Sylvester Stu, Street Safety Improvements Project.
Can I get a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. No opposed, so it passes unanimously. Thank you for that, and we move forward to item fourteen, Unfinished Business. We have none.
No, we have one amendment added.
Correct, yes, we have an amendment. The one item from, brought forward by Councilmember Maloney, Mayor Protam Maloney.
Yes, it was regarding to the bills and communications, specifically I had questions about the bad debt write, debt write-off of one point three, just over one point three million dollars. Ms. Zabel, I know I've had communications with you in this past, I'm not sure how you'd like to, I'd like to give you the opportunity to address the comments I've already provided you without having to rehash a lot of it, but in essence, the core of what I'm looking at is, I believe that some of these, some of these collections may have been influenced by people losing their job and losing loved ones and other expenses due to COVID, and I was really looking for an opportunity to see whether or not we, there was value in address, in using some of our ARPA funding to potentially offset a certain limited category of folks who might have been, been impacted due to COVID, rather than turning it over to collections. So that's, that's, there are my thoughts of it. Ms. Zabel, could you maybe?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. So we, we did have a discussion about this over the weekend, and I've not had the chance to confer in detail, nor has the finance director had a, had an opportunity to look at eligibility. So that's one, one test we would want to look at is, would what you're suggesting, one, does it have the support of the majority of council, but two, does it, would it even be eligible for ARPA funding, that type of expenditure? And so that's, that's something we, I'm prepared to answer this evening, hopefully a little later in the week be able to answer that question. And then two, I think, and probably the more difficult one, is going to be to try to determine out of one point three two million dollars worth of debt out there from, right now, untold number of, you know, hundreds probably, of individuals, trying to go back in the record and try to figure out which, which of those come from COVID and which are not COVID-related, is probably not going to be a, an easy task. And then I, I think we've shared with council, finance director shared with council in the past, and we, Councilmember Maloney and I have certainly shared with one another via email, the J I S, or Judicial Information System Program is really only accessible for court employees. And so there's probably, I'm, I'm sure the judge is going to share with us that there's a capacity, a bit of a capacity issue in terms of, they have staff to do what they're tasked to do, this is probably going to be a fairly significant effort. I'd like the opportunity to talk to the judge. Judge unfortunately is west of the mountains today, with the pass closed and snowbound, I think, in Bellingham, when I communicated with him earlier today, so I cannot answer those questions for you tonight, but that's something we can work on during the week. If council wanted to pull off the court accounts receivable, the one point three two million for now, and approve the rest of the claims, then we could, we could come back to you, hopefully next week, with some more definitive answers.
Ms. Zabel, I very much appreciate that. You know, a little bit of where I'm, I've got a little heartburn is that I've been asking for these numbers in a variety of forms from staff for a year now, and so I understand that I'm not trying to put you on the spot to try to answer me in questions that you don't have any ability to ask me or answer me for. But this is something that, you know, we could, we, we saw coming, I'd asked for information, and it took a long time before I got any response meaningfully at all. The number I got was significantly lower than this, so there's a disconnect there on what I, information I received as part of this process, so I was unable to bring this forward in front of the rest of council in timely fashion, so that, that is a, is an ongoing concern, and a little bit of, a little bit of the background on this. And Ms. Zabel, do we, what is our legal obligation in terms of approving this timing? Do, do we have the ability to put, push off on this a bit, or is this one of the spots where state law is prohibiting us from?
I think we're fine delaying a, a portion of this for, for a week or so. And I, I would, I would just note that we're talking about a third branch of government here, right? So each branch runs individual of the others, and so this is again, one of these rare intersections where judicial, legislative, and executive branches kind of collide and are trying to work together to get information.
Absolutely understand.
So I, I just have a follow-up question on the, the debt, and that is that when I took my tour of City Hall, I had met with the department that processes utility water billing, and they were sharing that they have had a huge positive result out of setting up payment plans and with city users in outreach. And so I guess my first question is, part of, just to verify that part of this debt is for utility, delinquency, and paying bills, is that accurate?
This is court.
This is just discussion municipal court?
Yes.
Billing, okay, so it's not for water use, I thought we were pulling out?
Unless Mayor Protam has other, other than court concerns.
So if I, if I understand, Councilmember Roach, in the overall bills of communication, we could be in theory writing off and sending to collections some portion of utility building, billing, and we have in the past, but we are certain, but that, that doesn't appear to be the case in this particular agenda item.
Okay, all right.
Is that?
That clarification is helpful, thank you, because I thought we were under the, in the last two years now, close to two years, assisting those that weren't able to pay their utility bill because of COVID, with those COVID cares dollars, is that correct? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so it's my misunderstanding, I apologize.
So I've got a couple of thoughts. First, I'd like to know what we have left of our funds before making any decision, and secondly, if we're talking about court accounts receivable, assumably these are punitive dollars for people who have broken the law. I'll be honest, unless there's some particular reason that someone killed someone or did something illegal due to COVID, and that's still not necessarily a justification, I don't see any reason in writing this debt off unless there's a tremendous benefit to the city on the back end. So unless this money comes directly into our fund, which I don't believe it does, and I could be wrong here, I see no reason to forgive this debt. And then I think, I think the point is that Mr. Zabel made, tracing it back to what's COVID-related and what's not, I think is going to be extremely difficult, so I, I'd, I'd have some concerns about waiving this debt and finding its nexus to COVID nineteen.
And I think what I would add to that, I agree with you, Councilmember Serrano, that I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't be in favor of writing off debt for somebody who has, you know, maybe not paid, I'm, I'm just throwing something out there, like child support or something like that, right? I think last year, one of the, the state, the state legislature approved removing driving with license suspended as a charge. I think for me, that would be one of the things that, not just for me, but a lot of people, and a lot of people who are economically disadvantaged, it keeps them in kind of that cycle of poverty, in that if you get a, a driving while license suspended, and then you have your car impounded, then you still got to drive to work, or get to work in some kind of way, and it makes it harder, and it just continues that vicious cycle. So from municipal court perspective, I would be interested in that lane of maybe looking at not punitively hurting our residents that way, and that's, I, I don't know if there are any other things that municipal court-wise you all would think would be worthy of us evaluating, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just, I want to kind of make sure we're, we're staying in our lane here. The, the reference that Mr. Zabel made about the third branch of government is absolutely critical here, because we have to understand that these are what refer to as legal financial obligations, L F Os, and there's a lot of case law, and there's some very strict guidelines about what courts can and can't do with regard to how these financial obligations are, are able to move forward. So before we got, I mean, we take some research, good news is, I got, I got a couple of folks that work for us that have a lot of experience with L F O dockets and understand this process very well. I think we, we should be able to, to help, and I know the judge has reached out and, and tried to figure out some more, get some more information on this area as well, but I do want to make sure that we're clear that there may not be a whole lot that we can do here just because of the strict requirements that, that the court has to go through to determine whether these are legal financial obligations that have to be maintained or not. So, but we'll, we'll get you those answers, but it is, it is a very well-defined area of law.
Thank you for that. And City Manager Dave, do you have a comment?
I, I just was going to make one other comment, and Mayor Protam, and I have not had a chance to talk about my most recent email to him, but one, one thing I suggested was, because of the uniqueness of the situation and the three separate branches, you know, there, I, I don't, you know, as the executive branch head, have much authority, probably no more than council does over the judiciary, any more than they do over us, and it may make some sense for council to appoint a couple of representatives, because I, I think we're all talking, with the exception of our learned city attorney here, about legal things we probably know less about than we do know. May make some sense to, for council to appoint one or two representatives from among themselves to work with myself or deputy city manager, and work with the judge and the court clerk, and just kind of maybe gain a little bit better understanding of how, because I, I think all three branches are probably, to varying degrees, a little bit frustrated for different reasons on this whole issue.
Thank you for that. So there's a possibility of assigning a couple of people. Are you interested, and who else is interested in being part of this committee?
Yeah, I would be, I would of course be very interested. I've been asking questions about this off and on, behind the scenes to the judge for the entire time on council. Doesn't mean I've learned enough, and certainly, I think to Mr. Serrano's point earlier, is that I'm not making a proposal that we dedicate funds at this point in time, because I don't know enough to know even what might be in this bucket and what might be in that bucket, whether to even support an effort here, because I simply don't have, well, for, for, perhaps overstating it, I have no information about what's, what's going to this debt. I just know that we're about to approve over one point three million. I just know that we're about to approve over 1.3 million dollars to go to collections and, um, and it seems very logical to me that some of that could have a nexus with COVID. I don't know which ways that would be. I'm not proposing a solution as to how we find out, but I want to know what information we have so that we can make an informed decision as to whether or not there is even a solution to move forward on or whether we can even address it as to Mr. Ferguson's point. So I'm very interested in diving in deeper and understanding this better. So I'd be happy to volunteer for that committee.
Do we have any other volunteers from our council members that wish to work with Mr., with council member Mayor Protem Maloney?
I'll volunteer myself.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Roach. Council, Councilwoman Torres, uh, just wanted to give you the opportunity, uh, if you wish to be part of this, uh, mini committee.
I could be a backup.
Sounds good. So we have, uh, Mayor Protem Maloney and Councilwoman Roach, um, spearheading this, uh, um, committee and if need be, Councilwoman Torres.
Hey, that's great. So on, on the issue of the, the claims report and the approval of that, I think council has probably a couple of, uh, paths they could choose. They could, they could, uh, consider the motion as presented or they could amend the motion to, uh, postpone, uh, the court accounts receivable, uh, for a undetermined time until we have the opportunity to do the research we've been discussing.
Do you have a proposition, Mayor Protem?
I do. Uh, I moved to approve claims in a total amount of 12,237,955 dollars and 31 cents, um, to the various checking counts listed in the agenda packet and to approve, uh, bad debt write-off. Do, sorry, Mr. Ferguson, do you need to complete that as one motion or, and leave it there? Do, just a claim approval as one motion and then separately do the bad debt write-off as a separate, separate one, a separate motion?
You know, normally these were all included in the consent agenda, so there was only one, but, uh, I think, uh, it wouldn't be, uh, it wouldn't hurt to do it as two separate ones. You could do it together, but two separates preferred.
Great. So I do make the motion for the just the claims approval on the amount of 12,237,955 dollars and 31 cents in the various checks listed, um, in the agenda.
And do we have a second on, um, the first portion?
Second.
Seconded by council member Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say name.
Actually, these need to be roll call.
Oh, let's do the roll call.
Councilmember Maloney.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
And Campos.
Yes.
It was unanimous.
And that's unanimous and we go to the second portion.
I move to approve bad debt write-off for utility building, ambulance, cemetery, uh, general accounts, um, and municipal accounts, um, uh, receivable in a total amount of, uh, let's see, 135,556 dollars and 98 cents. And of that amount authorize, uh, zero dollars to be turned over to collection.
Can I get a second?
I'll back it up.
Seconded by councilwoman Torres. And do we need a roll call again?
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yes.
Councilmember Milney.
No.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor, uh, Barajas.
Yes.
And councilmember Campos.
Yes.
So there's six for and one against and the majority rules.
So that passes, uh, with six votes. Thank you for that. Mr. Ferguson, do you have another question?
Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Okay. All right. And with that, we move forward to, let me get back on track. Um, item 15, new business. Seeing none, we move to item 16, miscellaneous discussion. Go ahead, city manager Zabel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I did just want to note that we had a couple of significant retirements in the, um, uh, police department this past month. Sergeant, uh, Dave Allen and, uh, Dave spent, I think, uh, about 36 years with the city of Pasco Police Department, his entire career here. And, uh, Dave, uh, retired on the 30th of December. Uh, he, he basically put us on the map for social media, the Pasco Police Department. So that's, that's probably where you most recognize him from over the last several years. Uh, he's done a great job of training. The folks are going to take over the social media piece. Uh, and then also Jamie Rabel, uh, Sergeant Jamie Rabel, uh, 40-year career, 36 of it in Pasco as well. And, uh, Jamie for the last several years has been heading up, uh, Investigations Division and doing a great job for us on a number of very complex cases. I, I wanted to kind of note those two retirements and then we've also had a number of promotions as well. And I'm going to turn that over to Chief Rosskey to talk about those.
Go ahead, Chief.
I think we lost you. Can you hear us? Chief Rosskey? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry about that. Technology, I guess, at its best. Uh, yeah, so with those two retirements, that, that allowed for a couple of promotions for replacements. And then, uh, we, we expanded our command division with the creation of another, uh, captain, uh, which created another sergeant's promotion for a total, and then, uh, our Office of Professional Standards, which we stood up for a total of four sergeants. Sergeant, uh, Dan Ward, Sergeant, uh, Park, Sergeant Decker, Sergeant Groom, uh, have all been promoted in the last month. Uh, will be moving to the patrol division supervising one of the patrol squads. As you know, we have a sergeant overseeing, uh, the city, uh, 24 hours a day, uh, at any given time. So they're integral in moving forward with, uh, with our, with our, uh, high level of standard that, that we, uh, that we put out. And then, um, one of our sergeants who, uh, we promoted to captain is Captain Brian Bot, or he was Sergeant Brian Bot, he's now Captain Brian Bot. You guys will remember him from presentations at council and, uh, in the community as, uh, as we looked at our use of force and active shooter, um, uh, programs. He was, uh, he was key, a, a key instructor, um, inside the department and outside the department. So, uh, a lot of movement inside for us to get ready, but to set this up for the future. Um, I'm proud of each and every one of those, uh, leaders that are moving forward and, uh, I look forward to, to more from them. Any questions on that?
Do we have any questions from our council? Looks like we don't, chief. Thank you so much for that information.
Thank you.
And councilwoman Roach, you had a comment?
Yes, for, I just wanted to, to put something out there and my request is, um, you know, this weekend, once again, I had another technology issue. It seems to be the constant theme of, of the last few years. Could access, you know, reading the, the applications, the applicants for the, the open position, um, but then couldn't even open the agenda and the packet. And so, um, it got me to thinking about, um, about the timing of when we receive our agenda and packet. Um, there's just that Friday evening, you know, Friday 4:00 PM or whatever to Monday and that's a really quick turnaround. Um, and oftentimes these packets are really long. Um, so any additional lead time, um, would be greatly appreciated because then it gives it me, at least I'll speak for myself, um, more time to read what's in it. Um, and so I don't know, you know, I don't know internally what that process, I know you guys have a, a certain process that you go through before that packet is posted and that agenda is proved, approved. So just love to hear about what that process is and if there is any bandwidth, whether that's moving that date up or moving council day further into the week just to help that out. I don't know. I'm seeing Mr. Ratkai go like this. I'm causing him strain here in this request, but I just wanted to ask the question and see, you know, what, um, you know, what's available.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, you know, when, when we have our, obviously our council meetings on Monday, we're meeting the very next day to debrief, but, uh, we, that gives the department heads basically about a day and a half to get things ready for the next agenda. And for regular council meetings, that's not too bad. For workshops, it's a little more difficult. The regular council meetings, particularly for items that have been on the previous workshop, uh, they're, they're a little easier to turn around. Uh, you know, we just went through a very difficult period, obviously the end of last year to, you know, try to get our, our schedule got quite compressed to try to be able to take a couple of meetings off in, in December. And, uh, there's obvious, just a lot of activity and I think COVID has just kind of taken its weight for the last year and a half as well and kind of complicated our agendas. But, uh, so that, they, they have, the, the departments have about till Wednesday to get their information in, which gives us a day to review it, day to get it uploaded, day to work, get legal review on things. Uh, so I, I think it would be, I think it would be quite difficult to probably pinch that amount of time and have a good thorough review, uh, unless, unless we were to push stuff out basically two weeks to the next meeting. So we kind of slow the process down, I think is what you'd, you'd find, which, you know, may be desirable, I don't know. But, uh, rather than being able to turn things around in a few days, we're basically turning them around in a few days plus two weeks because you aren't going to have time if you try to shorten that window. So pushing the meeting out a day is a possibility. We haven't really looked at what the ramifications might be of that, what other meeting conflicts there might be or, or conflicts among council. It seems like an appropriate conversation to have at your retreat as a, perhaps a retreat item on how you want to do that or, or workshop it before then if that's, uh, something that's of interest to council.
Well, I'd definitely be interested in talking about it at our retreat. Um, and, and just thinking about too, is there, are there other ways to kind of construct our meetings in a month in terms of maybe bookend regular meetings and kind of sandwich the, the workshops in the middle? Um, is that breaking some, uh, you know, RCWs and in the order of which we have to hold meetings? Um, okay, well, I, I, I don't need, I don't need like a definitive answer from anybody. I just wanted to toss the idea out there. Um, just because I know that, you know, staff is doing their best to get us the information in a timely manner and turn that packet around. And I know that's, uh, probably a daunting task because that's a lot of information. Um, every week you guys are putting that out, so I really appreciate that. Um, I just want to be able to, I guess, stew on it and chew on it a little bit longer so that, you know, over the weekend, just like in that last item, over the weekend, if a question arises, that's also your weekend. It's also our weekend and expecting you guys to be on email to turn around a question, like produce an answer like that is also kind of a quick ask. So, um, I'm just thinking out loud about if there's alternatives.
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, you're correct. It's a lot of information. There's, there's also, you know, expectations on the part of the public and on the part of council too, to get items turned around quickly and, and try to push things through, uh, or at least get things in front of council for consideration, uh, on the part of, you know, the people that do business with the city. Again, I think, uh, you know, probably a more, uh, thorough conversation at, at a workshop or retreat setting might be the best. Uh, you had a, a comment, I was gonna, I mean, I, I kind of lost my thought though, but, uh, in term, oh yeah, in terms of the structure, that's pretty much up to council. Uh, right now it's codified what, what nights we meet on, but that's something council can change with amending the ordinance. So, you know, it's, it's, it's something we'd want to do deliberately and, you know, through a thorough process, but yeah, it's certainly within council's realm to do it.
Thanks for letting me rattle your brain a little bit on that.
Uh, I would agree with my, my colleague here. Um, I know that I send, Dave, I know I send your staff sometimes very lengthy emails on Saturday or Sunday and it is not always feasible for them to respond to me before the action is taken on the workshop or business meeting on Monday. So sometimes the, um, I know that's a real, I, I put a lot of strain on some of your staff in terms of timing. You would like to, um, be very sensitive to that. So workshop, or not workshop, but a, at a retreat, I'd really welcome, um, your thoughts on how we can make sure that we're not pinching your staff as well, um, in, in this work. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for this comment. And if you could just remind us when, uh, the dates for the retreat.
We haven't nailed down a date yet. We're still working with the facilitator and, yeah. But it'll be in March. Yeah, typically it's in March.
All right. So it sounds like it's something that we definitely want to discuss further, um, whether at a workshop meeting or most likely the retreat. Do we have any other comments from our council members? Councilwoman Torres, do you have any comments or questions?
Nope, not at the time.
Thank you. And we do have need for executive session tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So, uh, if we haven't done enough new things tonight, I thought I'd add one more to the plate. So, uh, we can just kind of do a little trial by fire here. This is one of, uh, this is kind of a unique, uh, uh, executive session. It is for, uh, under RCW 4230, 110, 1C, uh, and it's a consideration of minimum offering price for sale or lease of property, real estate if there's a likelihood disclosure would decrease, decrease the price. Uh, since we, uh, originally were involved in this particular matter, um, uh, case law has changed. And so now we need to kind of go back and re-ring the bell and kind of, uh, discuss in open session what the factors would be that we're using to discuss the, uh, the sale of the property. Uh, so, uh, I don't mean to put Mr. Ratkai on the spot here, I, cause this, uh, this kind of came to me late and, and realized that we probably should do this since, uh, the last time we did this, uh, it was prior to the, the change of case law. So we should probably talk in open session about the factors that we want to consider, location, uh, the buyer, uh, those types of items now, get those out here. We don't have to associate any value with those, uh, particular items, but then when we go into executive session, then we can assign values to that. But, uh, unfortunately between when this first started and now, uh, this, this particular, uh, executive session, uh, exemption, uh, has changed dramatically. So anyway, with that, uh, we probably wanted to just talk a little bit about, um, what we're going to, uh, the factors we were going to consider when we go into executive session prior.
Sounds good. Director Recker.
One of the parcels, excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. One of the parcels that we'll be discussing this evening is residential lot that was a remainder residential lot that's in possession, uh, by the city of Pasco. We were approached by an individual interested in purchasing the lot. Um, in reviewing the, the title work, there's no requirements that the city keep the lot. It is certainly surplus to city need. Uh, there's no public works need for it as well. And, um, it's, uh, this is new territory for me too. So I think it's, it's.
Sorry, Zach, I, I put him on the spot. I just asked him a second ago which property this was about and then realized this was the one that, uh, we're coming too late. So yeah, uh, the factors that I think were originally considered for this, uh, were related to location and, uh, the, the buyer specifically, I thought, but I don't want to talk out of school if that's not correct, Mr. Zabel.
What I, I would suggest price and, uh, proposed use as well.
Gotcha. Okay. That should cover us.
Perfect. Do we have any questions or comments before we go into executive session?
I will.
So 10 minutes, 15 minutes for executive session?
I think the agenda, 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Eric, how much time do you have?
Okay, I don't know. How much time?
Uh, we'll say 15 at the most.
Okay. And with that, city council will now meet in executive session to discuss, um, consideration, to discuss consideration of the minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate if there's a likelihood that disclosure. if there's a likelihood that disclosure would decrease the price per RCW 42.30.110, Item 1, Item C. And we will be in session for 15 minutes, so we will reconvene at 10:06.
And with council's permission, joining you would be the City Attorney, Deputy City Manager, ACS Director and City Manager.
Perfect. We will be in session and will reconvene shortly. Thank you.